Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first council meeting back in the new council chambers, April the 26th, 2022. It's nice to see everyone here. Attendance has been taken. Other than Councilor Chambers, we're all here. It's nice to see everyone again. It's hard to believe that we were off live more than we've been on live. So it's going to be an adjustment that we're all back together again. But I think seeing everyone's frame of mind tonight, and it's been a very good few minutes that we've had before council to talk about everything that's gone on in the last two years. So thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. This is a hybrid meeting, and if Councilor Chambers was to choose to join the meeting from home, which he isn't online, he certainly could have. And moving forward, if something comes up and you don't feel comfortable, or you're not feeling well, or maybe even you're on vacation, who knows? We are going to leave it in a hybrid state for a little while and see how that works out. But first choice, as always, to see you here at Council Chambers in person. First thing on the agenda is the attendance. The attendance has been taken with the exception of Councilor Chambers. We're all here. Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything to add to the agenda? Councilor Coleman?
I do it right now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, if you like.
It won't take me long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it gives me pleasure to bring this brick the night. I received this the other night at the Fireman's, Onadega Fireman's Ladies' Night. This is a picture of the old fire hall in Onadega. It has been flashed on the screen here a number of times before we started, and a picture of the new hall. So we had a, the boys had 100 bricks done, so they're all, they're all marked. So I said, the first place this is going, my council desk Tuesday night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. You have to understand that bringing bricks into the council chamber usually makes the mayor very nervous. But recognizing the color.
I usually have a spaghetti pot or something to put on my head when I see bricks in the
council chambers, but I didn't bring one tonight. Councilor Miller, your next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two very brief items under other business, item 12.
Do you want to tell us what they are now, or do you want us to wait?
I'll bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions? Councilor Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make notice of a motion. I'm not quite sure it should come to council or perhaps to admin and operations. And if I'm using the wrong process, appreciate if people would let me know.
Thank you. Any others? Noting that there is one addendum, seeing that there is one addendum, I'm looking for a motion, Councilor Wheat, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Coleman, that the County of Brant council agenda and addendum of April 26th, 2022 be approved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you. Number three on the agenda is a declaration of pecuniary interest. Does anyone have an obvious one? If one crops up, please let me be the first one to know. Number four, delegations, petitions, and presentations. We don't have any tonight. And we'll move on to number five, which is the adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting. Councilor McAlpine?
Moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Leferye that the minutes, the County of Brant minutes of March 22nd, 22 be approved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Are there any minutes or business arising from the minutes? Councilor Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items, if I may. Item six is in regard of a meeting that we were going to hopefully arrange with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to discuss the lack of provincial response to the submission of the County of Brant draft official plan. And I wondered whether we'd been able to arrange that.
Okay. Now, I'm having a hard time understanding Councilor Bell. I'm getting a lot of feedback, and he's very muffled. Can you see what you can do with his microphone? Can you hear me clearly, Councilor Bell?
I'll try again. Shall I try again?
Yep, please.
Okay. So in regard of item six, and it is a request that the mayor request in turn a meeting with the Ministry of, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to discuss the lack of provincial response to the submission of the County of Brant draft official plan. And I wondered whether we'd been able to arrange that meeting.
Okay, we have a letter sent out. I don't know that there's been a meeting set up yet.
Okay, thank you.
We're waiting to hear back.
And I have one other comment on item 8.2. We talked in there about a news release following our letter to local MPPs and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing in regard of the official plan and our concerns in respect of the new legislation. And I wondered whether we have had that news release. I haven't seen it.
Mr. Bradley, do you know whether we have?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I can't find the item. Sorry, there we go. I'll look into it. I don't believe we've sent it, but we can, we can look into it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it's important that we do let the public know what's going on, because this is going to come, I think, as a shock to many people at the wrong time. The minute somebody wants to make a development next door to where they live, they'll scream blue murder as to why didn't we know about this? And I think we need to be letting the public know that we are concerned about the influence, the increasing influence of provincial government on our ability to manage development in our county.
I think you're right, Councilor Bell. I don't think, I think if more people knew the process and knew what we were under and what we're able to do quickly and what we're not able to do at all, they would be, they would be more apt to understand why things happen the way they do. Councilor Leferye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you, and I guess through you to the rest of council. I saw recently, and this is related, an excellent video from the County of Brant on how to recycle in the County of Brant. And I think those type of communication efforts on something that has dogged people here and there, it's a little confusing, it's different than in other communities, something like that about the development process would probably be well received and needed in order to do that public education piece. So I know in-house we can do that sort of thing, and maybe, maybe that in addition to what we were talking about with press releases, et cetera, those type of communication materials about complex things, whether they're roundabouts or recycling or things like that, may help. And we haven't really done that on the development side, and maybe it's time to look at that. Just in support of what Councilor Bell was saying.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley?
And further, I'm just reminded that I think we were waiting to, I'm just reminded now, that we were waiting to see what the outcome of, whether we, are we got a delegation at the Ontario Good Roads Conference, which we didn't, so we will proceed with the press release now, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Consent items to be approved. Councilor Gatward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Wheat that the County of Brant supports the local action by the Brant County Health Unit to reduce the risk of West Nile virus and authorizes any permit application for West Nile virus control submitted to the Ministry of Environment from an appropriately licensed exterminator to apply larvicide into catch basins or surface waters located within the County of Brant. And that this consent item be approved.
Any questions to the consent item before we vote? Seeing none, thank you for bringing it forward. All those in favor? Opposed, carried? Thanks, Councilor Gatward. 7.2. Councilor Miller, you have this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and personally, I would like 7.2.5 separated. And are there any others to separate before I move?
Councilor Howes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I would like to see 7.2.1, the Police Services Board minutes pulled for a brief discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Bell, you had one?
Saying this, Councilor Howes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Miller, if you want to go first, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so, oh, all right. Okay, 7.2.5, and I just want to give a shout out to our colleagues at the City of Berry for at least addressing the joint and sever liability issue. We have worked on that as, here in the county, for many, many years, as have many other municipalities. And AML obviously has, they've got some suggestions that they've put forward as well. So again, I think it's a great resolution. I think their timing's terrible with the provincial rent about to be dropped next week. And if we weren't in this election cycle where we are, I would certainly support their resolution, and we bring forward a similar resolution. But again, I just want to bring this up, highlight it, and maybe in a couple months, depending on how things go provincially, we could support it. So I just wanted to make a note of that.
Thanks, Councilor Miller. Councilor Howes, you want to speak to the Police Services report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. This would be, I guess, a question that I'm offering or suggesting to the members of council who sit on the Police Services Board. As we, as spring has finally arrived, we are hearing, as we do every spring, I think, some more complaints and concerns about speeding vehicles and loud vehicles. And I was downtown Saturday and Sunday this, this weekend, and there were certainly examples of both. And I saw in these minutes that we have, we've had, and for the benefit of the members of the public who don't necessarily read this report, the report we have in front of us is December statistics, and it shows a 71.2% increase in Highway Traffic Act offenses and 172% increase in speeding charges. And this prompt, this combined with the concerns and complaints that we've received recently prompted me to think about the investment we made last year in additional police officers, specifically to target Highway Traffic Act offenses. And I'm just wondering, my question to the members who are on the Police Services Board, are we, are we hearing, whether it's reports or anecdotal reports, that that investment is directly related to these increased charges? Are we, are we, is that investment paying off for the taxpayers? And I'm just wondering if, if Counselor Pierce, for example, if he has any, anything to offer on that, or if it could be discussed further at Police Services Board?
Yeah, I'll let you know that we do speak of it often at Police Services Board. Counselor Pierce, do you want to speak to it as far as the extra officer?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Through you, to Counselor Howes, and to everybody else here. Yeah, absolutely. It's been something that we've been discussing with the two traffic officers, the speeding, and unfortunately, speeding is an issue all across the county. It is something that's brought up. They are doing their focused patrols, and even as of our last meeting, the February stats, the speeding charges are actually up over 78% again, which is a good thing. They're in the mindset now where they're giving less warnings and more charges are being laid, which people, I think, are getting the, getting the hint on that, that we're not there yet, but it is, it is definitely having an impact with those two new constables on there for traffic. As far as the loud mufflers and motorcycles and that, actually, just at our meeting last week, I brought that up again, that it is the season for that. And I know last year, they strategically placed themselves in spots where the vehicles would be going uphill and accelerating so they can hear it better. And that is something that they're, they're, they're going to be doing more focused patrols on it and being in those spots again to try and curb that. The unfortunate part is with the noise and the decimal reading, we haven't got that tool at this point in time. So it's tough to, to understand a vehicle that goes past if it's, if it's within the limits or not. And if they do make a stop with the, with the motorcycles and things like that, and with the aftermarket mufflers, they're to the point now where they're actually taking pictures of the vehicles underneath so that when it does go to court, they've got the evidence there in order to, to back up what their, the charges are, because what was happening before is, is, you know, people were being charged, there was no evidence that the muffler was actually aftermarket, and it would go to court and it'd be thrown out. So circle back to answer your question, yes, it is making a difference on them, and they, I would suggest that after the summary, we'll notice a huge difference in it. That's the hope, anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Pierce. Counselor Howes, follow on?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the information from Counselor Pierce. The one last item, if maybe could be communicated back to the Police Services Board, is there continue to be some issues with non-local trucks using Grand River Street North and coming down the hill and going through downtown. And we've had complaints about that, too. And that, that also falls under the Highway Traffic Act offenses that these two new officers could, could be applied to. So if we just pass that along, it would be appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Howes. Is there anyone else that has anything else? Counselor Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard of the Police Services Board item, in section 9.1, under Council Communication, it says Counselor Pierce noted a positive community feedback with regard to increased police presence. So it relates to what Counselor Howes had just asked. But my question is in the, on the second line of that paragraph, in regard, in relation to availability of speeds by data. Now, I know that we have been able to see some speeds by data. Is it generally available to the public? Because I find it a very useful means to communicate to people that are concerned about speed in their area. If we have that data, I like to be able to say, well, we've seen it. We know what it is. Yes, there's a speeding problem, no, there isn't a speeding problem, because many people have a, perhaps not, the best view on what speeding is. It seems like somebody's going fast, but the proof of the pudding is in our speeds by data. And if we could make that publicly, publicly available, I think it would be very helpful. And maybe the question is to staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Bell. Michael, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. So Mr. Walton tells me that it's not available. We do have the data. Actually, just in the last couple days, our traffic safety specialist has just started, so that's certainly a task we could, we could assign to that person. And there may be some legalities to that, but we could look into that. But I think the data, we certainly give it out if people ask for it, and if we could find a, an online tool or a mapping tool that could make that available, we could certainly look into that.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, if we could make it available. A lot of people, you know, do come forward and say, I've got speeding in my area. So my response is, we'll go through the Brant Safe Speed Strategy, we'll make a report, we will come out, and we will actually measure, but we need to close the loop. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Bell. Counselor Leferye, please.
Thank you. Related to, for the second time, to something coming out of Counselor Bell's comments, through you, I believe, Michael, we, pre-pandemic, I do remember, we had approved a budget item about public widgets that would be available on our websites for data sharing and open government. One of the things we had discussed at the time during the budgetary process was adding things like this to, to a public widget process online where people could have the data for themselves. Is that still possible? I don't, though, again, we then had a big, you know, emergency for two years, but I'm wondering if maybe there's a connection there we can make?
Michael?
Yeah, I, sorry, this seems to be a theme for me tonight. I'll have to look into that. But Mr. Walton had something to add to the previous question, which I think was connected, so.
Mr. Walton?
Through the mayor, at Counselor Bell. The actual raw speeds, speeds by data, and I got to watch, I don't talk too loud here, is, would be useless to actually put up. The data that we could put up has to be managed, and that's actually a bigger issue. The data that you get in the reports has been looked at, and we look at the 85 percentile and all this sort of stuff. So I think that we should look at this and see what we could put up there, but we would not be putting up all the raw data. That would be a useless exercise. So we will look at that and come up with something that would be useful, and maybe put in a repository for where we had put information in front of council as to what that is and what, what's up there, because that has been analyzed, and we've done it, you know, dozens of reports over a period of time that have talked about that. And so if we found a spot on the website where we could do that and put that information on there, accumulate that, that would be good, and find a way to how we deal with the rest of it. But what you ask for is not possible.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce, and then back to Counselor Bell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, just to comment back to Mr. Walton there. I think, and I don't want to put words in my colleague's mouth here, but I think what the constituents are looking for is the fact of, okay, so we had, you know, 500 cars go through, and, you know, 450 of those cars were within the, you know, so much of the speed limit, so that's, I think that's the data they're looking for. They're looking for the, the actual, the tale of the tape, so to speak, as to, you know, to Counselor Bell's point, you know, are the cars really speeding down my road? And only that data will tell. So I don't think we need the, the raw data per se, but just the, the percentage of those within the, like, under the speed limit, within so many kilometers of the speed limit and in excess, I think that's the information that we need.
Counselor Bell, is that what you're looking for?
I think Counselor Pierce got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items that you want to speak to? Seeing none, Counselor Miller, you have this, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Coleman, that consent item 7.2.1 to 7.2.12 be received as information.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed and carried? Moving on to number 8.1, please. Counselor Bell?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McAlpine, that the Planning and Development Committee report be approved, noting that there are two items.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed and carried? Moving to 8.2, Operations Administration and Community Report, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Wheat, that the Administration and Operations Committee report for April 19th, 2022 be approved.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor? And opposed? Carried? Thank you. Paramedic Services Committee report, I believe it's just a report. Are there any que, oh, Counselor Leferye, you want to put on the table, please?
Thank you. Moved by myself, Mr. Mayor, and seconded by Counselor Pierce, that the minutes of the Paramedic Services Committee of April 4th, 2022 be approved.
Are there any questions to Counselor Leferye? Seeing none, all those in favor to accept the report? Thank you. Staff reports, 9.1, Community Improvement Action Plan. Does anyone want to speak to it, or are we just going to accept it? Any questions?
I have to move it.
You have to move it. Counselor Leferye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by, not Counselor Chambers, so I'm going to need...
I need a secondary for that, Counselor Howes, thank you.
Counselor Howes, that the Community Improvement Plan Application, CIP 22-03, from the owner of 11 Grand River Street North for, I almost said a different word there, facade improvements, be approved to a maximum amount of 12,500, and that the mayor clerk be authorized to execute the Community Improvement Plan Agreement for CIP 2020, 2203.
That was a mouthful. Are there any questions for Counselor Leferye? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. There was nobody opposed. Communications, 10.1, there's no resolution. Let me get it in front of me here. Everyone's clear as to what 10.1 is? Counselor Wheat?
I'll move to receive all four communications.
Thank you. Does any, seconded by Counselor Pierce. Counselor Miller, you want something separated?
Yeah, please, 10.2.
10.2. Counselor Miller?
I'm just wondering, I don't know all the ins and outs of designating an area as a community safety zone. Yeah, I'm just wondering, maybe, is this something that needs to go to staff first?
Michael?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. If you'd like to refer to staff, I believe we have had some conversations with the, with the resident, and I think we are doing some work. In fact, there was a meeting earlier this week on community safety zones in preparation for automated speed enforcement activities, so. But if you'd like to refer that to staff, we can certainly, I would, I would imagine that, that stretch of road would have been included anyways, so.
Okay.
Please refer, feel free to refer to staff, and we will give it due consideration.
Okay, maybe we could separate that, and then once we approve the other ones for receiving, I'll, I'll move, let this be referred to staff, then.
So we're only removing 10.2 for now? We're going to vote on everything else? Clear, all those in favor? Opposed, carried? And you have something for, on 10.2? Counselor Miller?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, looking for a secondary, that this be referred to staff.
Seeking a secondary, Counselor Coleman? Everyone's clear? Thank you. All those in favor? So 10.2 goes to staff. Thank you. Resolutions, we have none. Other business? Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'd like to ask the CAO if he has a date for when Enbridge is going to come talk to us here, and I'll explain why.
Michael?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I believe they're coming to the upcoming May. I'm looking to Alicia to confer, May Administration and Operations Committee. Enbridge?
Yes.
Yeah, May Administration and Operations Committee. And they have two topics they want to talk about. They want to talk about the Hamilton Trunk Extension Project, and they also want to talk about community, the programs that they have available for, for local expansion projects that would be driven by members of the communities.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, and I know we've, we've turned over the, maybe the expansion of gas to our economic development, and I always thought gas was, or lack of natural gas or access to it was a, more of a rural problem, until I found out that we don't have natural gas on Laurel Street here in Paris. And I guess maybe that's why we don't have natural gas heating the pools, the pool, the outdoor pool. We're using propane, which tends to be expensive. And there's a house on Laurel Street, the resident, the homeowner pays $200 a month, or sorry, I apologize, $200 a week during the winter months to heat with propane. That, to me, that's energy poverty. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we missed an opportunity, because we just reconstructed Laurel Street, right? We just completed it. And would that have been a good time? I don't want an answer tonight, but, but I wonder if that would have been a good time to maybe look at some of that infrastructure that we could use for natural gas? So the, the reason I'm asking, Michael, is because I'm going to ask them that when they come, what we can do, you know? And like I said, I think we wasted an opportunity to expand there. I was, I was quite surprised that Laurel Street did not have natural gas, and I was shocked to hear how much those guys are paying for propane. So I'll leave it at that. The second item I want to bring up is, I just want to pay a little bit of tribute to Norm Booth, who I think most of us around here know, and he passed away earlier this month. And the more I, I, there's a lot about Norm I didn't know, and there's a lot I didn't know, but the more I learned about him, the more I was impressed with him. And this is, this is a fellow who devoted 50 years, right, to the fire service in the city of Brant, for the county of Brant. And he was busy, I think we know, recruiting for the new fire station north of Paris. And this is a guy who, who did training, you know, right up in, like, three or four days before he passed away. So very impressed with him, and like I said, I just, I just wanted to pay a little bit of tribute to him, because I think he's definitely one of the good guys, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any other questions or comments for new, new business? Do we have anything else? Counselor Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a notice of a motion. I think it may well go to the Admin and Operations Committee, so I apologize if I'm getting it in the wrong forum, but it's in relation to the Grand River Street North and William Street Junction. I think we have a persistent safety problem. When people are traveling east-west across that junction, particularly people coming from the west going east, they will move out of the lane that is meant for you to go straight across the bridge into the lane that is solely there for people making a right turn, and they'll go straight across the junction. And very often, you come to the point where you've got one car head up against the car coming in the other direction. And I think this will result very soon in a, an accident. It certainly results in traffic problems, because if people can't make the right, the left turn coming off the bridge, they hold up traffic, and then people get frustrated, and the whole thing then starts to devolve into a real problem. So I know this will be part of the downtown mask ban, but I think it's of such an urgent issue that we need to have staff look at ways of improving the efficiency and effectiveness, and particularly the safety of that junction.
It is a very confusing corner, and it is strange to figure out whether you're supposed to be going straight or waiting to, and people do go around people that are waiting. It's a very dangerous corner. You're asking staff to...
I, I will bring forward a motion to ask staff to do it, but if through this evening's proceedings, staff will take that on directly, I'd be more than pleased to have that happen, too.
I think we, before we bring forward a motion, if we could let staff try to figure it out and bring something to us in the next council meeting, that would be better. But if you're not satisfied after the next council meeting, you could bring it forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other new business? Other business? Anything anyone needs to say? If not, I'm going to ask Council Coleman to take us in camera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Council Howes, that the County of Brant Council convene in camera to discuss litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals and proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality.
Thank you. At this point, I'm sorry, oh, call the one, I'm sorry. All those in favor to move in camera? Thank you. We're good. Thank you, Council Howes. Ratifying?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by Council of Ferrier, that items one and two of the Administration and Operations Committee in camera confidential report of April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two be approved.
Thank you. All those clear on what you're voting on? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimously? Going on to number fourteen. Who has the bylaws tonight?
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Gatward, that the following bylaws be now read a first time, and that would be bylaw number forty dash twenty-two to forty-nine dash twenty-two.
Any question? Oh, thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor? Call for the second reading, please, Council Miller?
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Gatward, that the following bylaws be now read a second time, and all clauses and preambles be adopted, and that being bylaw numbers forty dash twenty-two, all the way to bylaw number forty-nine dash twenty-two.
Thank you. Are there any questions to fourteen point one to fourteen point ten? Seeing none. Call for the third and final reading, please, Council Miller. Oh, Council Coleman?
No, got a vote?
Oh, call the vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor, the second reading? Thank you. Third reading, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Gatward, that the following bylaws be now read a third time, passed, signed, and sealed. That would be bylaws numbers forty dash twenty-two, all the way to forty-nine dash twenty-two.
Thanks, Council Miller. All those in favor, the third reading? No one opposed? It takes us to number fifteen, which is our next meeting. I don't want to, I don't want to stop. It went, it went too fast.
The next meeting is at the call of the chair.
The next meeting is at the call of the chair, which will be me. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Council Pierce, good night, and may God bless.